Yeah.
Okay, I think it's one thirty, we can have the meeting to order and welcome everybody and. Jen, if you want to.
I'm gonna defer to Josie.
Okay. But you introduce yourselves.
Josie Haynes, America two fifty Lebanon County.
Jennifer Cuso, Visit Lebanon Valley.
Tom Newmaster, um, two fifty, Lebanon PA.
Jan Morrissey, America two fifty, and others.
And Bonnie Lloyd, two fiftieth, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, the ink isn't dry yet, but otherwise.
Thank you.
Well, um, thank you for having us um come to this meeting and um. In front of you, you have uh our agenda of the meeting that we're we'd like to talk about and uh one of the things that we did do. Uh, we started off with and and discussed to have a mission statement, we realized that we needed one. Especially after we had the um community night at the expo um at the fair. Because a lot of people were coming up to our table and had no clue what America two fifty is. So there was a lot of things that we had to explain to them and uh really tried to get them interested in what's going to be happening in twenty twenty six. So we got together, we made our mission statement and it's right there in front of you so you can read it. Um, also, um, I know Jen sent you um an update on some of the things that we are. We had worked on and are going to work on um, and I'm hoping that everybody got a chance to read that. Um, a lot of the things that we realized um coming from. The community night is that we really need to educate. In twenty twenty six celebration of the United States. So we're gonna start working on press releases, um, working uh through radio, uh various news agencies. Um advertisers so forth to try to. Bring the community together and realizing what's going to be happening between now and July fourth of twenty twenty six. Um, we are working very hard and we have a list, excuse me, of um. Going to certain events here in Lebanon uh County, we um. We were supposed to have a presence at the CLA car show, that was canceled.
House was.
Or I'm sorry, postponed uh to October sixth. Um, we did um manage to get a spot at the uh Mount Greatna Arts Festival. Um, Tom could talk to you more about that because he was there. We did create a Facebook page. We're also in the process of uh trying to uh create a uh a website also. To uh keep people informed as to what we're doing and the events that we have been at. Um, we're also trying to. Basically trying to involve a lot of the nonprofits in this county. Uh Kiwanis Alliance Club, et cetera, uh Rotary. Um, hoping that maybe through them, we could spread the word easily with them and also try to get volunteers from these organizations. As you can see, this is it, this is the committee and it has been very difficult trying to do what we want to do with just. The five of us. So we're trying to really um get the nonprofits involved. Uh, I'm going to lead this, that that's the end of my spiel. I'm going to go ahead and defer to Jen Cuso, she could start with her spiel on what um Visit Lebanon Valley is willing to do as far as funding is concerned.
Well, that is the question, isn't it? That's been the question, it's hard to plan things when we don't really have money allocated. So we thought we'd start this process by saying what we're comfortable doing um and allocating for i- in the next three years. So uh on the second page, I've outlined for this year, I had already promised to do a video Lebanon Valley Proud. And we're almost finished with that, we have um maybe one day left of filming. Um, going to historic sites through, I think there's twenty plus sites and we've had great representation from all of these locations. And hopefully, when the videographer has a chance to uh edit it and put it together, we'll have that in a month or so. Um, that we can start spreading the word that way as well. Um, so that is our commitment to do that uh for this year. I didn't really have anything else budgeted this year, so I looked into the future years because we're going to need more than that. So um starting to brainstorm with my team, what can we do? How do we involve tourism? And I really think the two fifty is about highlighting our history. And we thought, wouldn't it be cool to do a two hundred and fiftieth um honorary or history heritage trail for children? Uh highlighting all these great places in the Lebanon Valley. So we have a Facebook group for Lebanon Lily and our children's group. And um we've got many followers on that, so we started brainstorming and thought red, white, and moo would be a cute little. Way to encapsulize this and, you know, work with all our historic sites throughout the county. And maybe it's a little scavenger hunt or something that we have. Uh, of course, this is all very rough at this point, it's just our brainstorming, but we would put money behind that. To enable that little um children's project and maybe we distribute it through schools at the end of May next year. And they can do it throughout the summer. Um, and then, you know, we went off on tangents, you know, red, white, and do, things you can do, attending parades and, you know. Uh participating in art projects and things like that. We'd love to create a historic coloring book and and something we can hand out, that's something they can do. Um, red, white, and view, is it going to Governor Dick, giving them some ideas of things they can do in the Lebanon Valley? The rail trails, what are it State Park, red, white, and chew. You know, of course, I'm always thinking of like Lancaster cupcakes would be really cool to do a little red, white, and blue cupcake, maybe for two dollars and fifty cents or something. Uh again, just merely brainstorming of what we could do with the people that are already following us and possibly more. Um, to encourage people to embrace the history of the Lebanon Valley. And even before that, so that is on our commitment, I have board approval to add that to my budget. Um, as well as, so we're looking at twenty thousand dollars for next year to add to our budget. I have two projects highlighted for next year, we had already talked uh with Carrie Royer of the uh Outdoor Art Show about. Her vision for this community art project. Um, she did submit it to a national campaign, a grant um uh access, but um was denied. Um, only one person out of the country got that, so she did not get that brand. So I said, I'd really like to make that happen, how can we work with you and, you know. So I would like to put something towards that because I think it's a fabulous idea and it's a way to get everyone involved. And maybe that beautiful mosaic, once the artist compiles it after going to all these locations and having community support. Um, that may go to the expo as as uh, you know, uh a display and commemorate the two fifty.
Do we know if that's enough money to do it?
Um, she has quoted twenty thousand dollars. Um, rough costs, so that would be half. And um I'm sure, you know, we can help her find some community support. Um, and then in addition for twenty twenty six, I would like to put twenty thousand dollars of our budget allocated towards. The the day of events, uh fireworks, um making them even a little better than they already are, maybe something special. Um, and and all those plans are really not formed yet, obviously, but. I I'm just coming to you saying, I am in for forty five thousand dollars.
That's great.
Is that.
No, I'm glad that you.
That work.
Have a, you know, some structure and you have some idea where you want to go with your budget so that we can know where where we can fit in. You know, I think we have to have a part in this uh in terms of uh support and uh. So we don't have issues of, you know, you have a, maybe it's a credit card that we can, when you're going away, Josie to a meeting or something or. Or at least have a a knowledge that if you need business cards or whatever you need. That you can get them reimbursed here up to a certain amount or whatever, we have to talk about what we can do. To make this so that you're not out of pocket, uh which is what I hear uh from time to time, that shouldn't happen, you know, we should be taking care of you. And I'm talking about anybody that's going to these meetings that they're spending their own money. Um, that would be, you know. Something that I think we need to discuss here to get us through the to the end of this year, because we didn't budget anything either. Um, but when we get into our budget cycle this year, we certainly have to be talking about it. I don't know to what extent, but I think we have to make a commitment since you guys are on board with with some financial support, I think that's.
Yeah, well, that's a perfect segue in in into the next part, so it feels like we have those. What we call tourism related aspects kind of funded by BLB. How could could the county, could the commissioners, could the county match that? To to handle all of the other non-related um.
Do you have an itemized budget?
Well, we don't, we, all we have right now is what BLB has committed, that forty five thousand over the next three years, it's not like.
One of the things that we're doing as far as what we've already. Uh have spent money, our own personal monies. Uh, I know that Tom has done backdrops so that and and he has to.
Yeah.
Get that squared away as a reimbursement. I know that I'm handing Dawn receipts for what I have already spent. Um.
I was going to say, just when we go through the budget process, it means you come in with a budget request. And then we review it and see what we can fund, so it's, I don't know that we just hand out money.
Well, and like, and like, how do we, how do, how do we do that? Is it, is it, is it funds allocated for those like reimbursement type things? Like, we we need to get like an easy up tent to do these events, right? It's gonna be some cost there, there's banners, there's signage, all of those type things, website development.
If we want to do T-shirts, there's.
Right.
For that and set up. Uh, we're all about doing this, this group of of us, but in the same token, we're starting at zero.
Right.
In fact, we're now in the negative. We have many ideas.
Well, we don't want to, you, you, we understand that, we're trying to get to the point where we don't have a negative. That you have going forward, uh, you know, you know what Dawn's gonna be taking your receipts and that we we have to commit to get you, we've asked you to do this. Um, and then when we get into budget cycle, then we can get more specific about what we're gonna do for twenty five, but we just gotta get you through twenty four for starters.
To make it the best we can, we had for Lebanon County, we want it to be epic and awesome, you know.
Yeah, and it's a dumb, like, really, I guess, giving that money over, it's just so that we know what we have to budget, what what money we have so that we can build our campaign and.
Yeah, absolutely, makes sense.
So you you currently have some, do you know, do you have the total, do you have an idea of the total, what you're in hand at the moment?
I do.
I'll just suggest how we go.
Yeah, yeah, that's really.
I'm kind of, the way we had thought about it is that we would have, and like, talking at a turn, if we had ten thousand dollars until the end of the year. I've already incurred um. Not including the mileage, because I don't know what you charge for mileage, but in my own personal monies that I have spent close to four hundred dollars. Um, like I said, I have put the mileage down, but, you know, I, of what we're going to these meetings, but I have receipts. I know that Bonnie has spent um close to two hundred dollars on flags, I think.
Well, on the second back to flags, I ordered, so we're probably about four hundred in flags.
Okay, so we're looking at four hundred dollars there as far as.
We've had shirts made, I've done two or three banners, a retractable banner, we just ordered our. Three-part retractable banner backdrop, that'll be when we go, that's like three, four hundred dollars, I haven't turned in those invoices or given them.
Okay.
So it's.
Is is that a starting point, I mean, we're gonna have to take action in a public meeting.
Yeah.
Obviously, if we're gonna allocate any funding, but I would say a a starting point would be try to itemize what you've already spent, so we have an idea. And if you have, again, it doesn't have to be detailed and perfect, but an idea of estimates and and what you might think. It'd be things that we would incur this year.
And we had a meeting with the mayor yesterday, um, and she's going to go back to. The council to talk about some details, so we don't want to talk about those. Once she has that meeting, then we'll know specifically. Um, or have more details around fireworks, maybe where the location of the fireworks happens in twenty twenty six, all all those details, but. Uh, and then there'll be dollars associated with those specific costs.
Talking about in twenty twenty six to live work of having a, and I think I mentioned this before, having a community picnic. And um. We are in talks with Pat Kerwin at the expo, I have a a meeting set up with him. Um. So, and and the mayor is also going to be involved in that meeting, so we've got the city supported after she talks to her council. But the mayor seems to be pretty positive as far as that's concerned. So we're gonna incur bills on that part, but that again is twenty twenty six. I was trying to deal with twenty twenty four right now.
Hundred percent.
And and so we, did you want to talk about, I was, I was gonna suggest. I mean, we're, we're in the end of August here, our budget is is, you know, two thirds gone. Um, and you don't have a line item there, so, but that doesn't mean you can't spend, you know, budget is a, is a, is a plan, it's not a. Uh, it's not always a definite, so if you have, if you, you already have some, it sounds like you might have maybe two thousand dollars in hand or something like that, that's fair, up to that. And then if you want to pick a number that's an up to number, then what we can do is, as they submit them, you know, we'll run them through the meeting, commissioner meeting. And and reimburse, now, I don't know how, do you want to do a clearing of the.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, I, my number in my head, Josie, was ten also, because to have something to work with. But if it's gonna be something that's gonna bite into that, like a thousand or over or five hundred, I think we should get a clearing of that one before. If it's gonna be something to get, because next year, if you put it on the budget for next year, if it waits till twenty five, then we can see what that picture looks like in a. In a, in a better planning sense, but I had a ten in my head to get you through, uh, so we don't have the issue of putting out your money and then, you know, saying we don't.
And I I think that's fair to get us through the end of the year. Um, we're trying to be very conservative. Um, trying, trying to be very conservative.
And once we have some, once we have some events and things planned and worked out, going out and getting donations and or sponsorships is gonna be easier, right? Uh, we already have a tentative plan for different business level sponsorships that would give them. Uh, A-frame signage in front of their store, a banner, sticker pack, T-T-shirts, you know, maybe like two fifty, five hundred level. Um, with most of the cost going for those items with maybe like fifty dollars leftover that will go into our fund to kind of raise, raise money. So we're, we haven't finalized those things yet, but again, until you know your events, what you have planned, it's kind of hard to ask people to.
That's, you know, I think we need like a fund control point or someplace for the funds to come.
Right, so, so, yeah, we did sell some of these things. How does that, how how do you want that money to come in or how do we, how's that, I I don't know how that works.
May I make a suggestion here, I don't know, you're, you're a five oh one C six. So you're tax deductible, but the six is for lobbying, I guess you're allowed to do, I forget how it was. Um, is is there a way that you could manage, that you could maintain just a, just an in, an in fund? You know, where if somebody, you know, you're, because you're gonna be in the midst of marketing those things and and receiving checks for them or whatever. If if you're out marketing the things, but then checks are made to County of Lebanon or something like that, I mean, yeah, so could, that might be a little, a little awkward or cumbersome.
Yeah, I I I, we do not accept cash or cards for anything at this point.
But if you're selling packages, for example.
But that makes sense, I would think, to come through the county for that. I mean, if we have a donation bucket, if we sell T-shirts and make five dollars on the T-shirts, there's a profit margin, but it needs to go somewhere.
Right.
Safe and clean.
And we don't want to be handling checks and or cash.
How do, how do you do things when you have like the the libations tour and the, and the uh those sorts of things, people are paying for their, their pass?
They don't pay for the pass, it's free.
So you don't, you don't sell anything like that, if you want to do.
In the Java journey pays ten dollars for theirs to the coffee maker. Like, we don't get any, the only.
So you don't have an existing mechanism for that where you could accept them and then.
Except cards.
Put them in a two fifty account.
Don't have anything like that, when we sell a Lebanon Lily book, we ask for cash and we give it in a fund back to the library.
We're, we're not, we're not really tooled for that kind of thing, because everything has to go through the county treasurer. Right, so, you know, eight to four thirty, that kind of thing, not sure.
Like going out and selling sponsorships, yeah, we could do that.
But we don't even.
Yeah, we do.
We'll come up with something that'll work, with post office box or something.
Sounds like it's not really easy or easy for either of us, I mean, it's not, we're not a retail location.
Mr. Wood says something here.
Comment.
Something be done similar to what was done for the Lebanon County Bicentennial in two thousand thirteen.
That was true.
Yeah, this. It has twelve, two thou, no, the county bicentennial in twenty thirteen.
Was twenty thirteen.
Yeah, and there were funds that were assisted, I, you know, through the commissioners and. I'm just asking if there's a possibility, however, things were done for that.
We'll, we'll figure.
If that's possible, sure.
I had two observations, number one is that it seems to me the Historical Society is a nonprofit. And if they would set up in their existing bookkeeping system, usually they use uh QuickBooks, you can just add another fund. And they could track it rather conveniently, uh, I I'm money outside looking in volunteering them, but I, it's worth an ask, number one. And number two, uh, during COVID, I think, whatever, and maybe it was part of the previous celebration, there were white. Boards, if we could get the same um setup. The, what said, you know, wear your mask could now say America two fifty, so you could recycle those boards. And if we need to supplement additional ones, we wouldn't have to buy vol- quite the volume. So those are just two observations slash suggestions to consider.
Sure, we could, we could work an option into that business sponsorship if someone had one of those, we could obviously provide those. We don't replace, we don't have them.
No, no, no.
Right, right.
But the businesses, yeah, they might still, either they have them stored or they're using them for something, but they could be recycled for America two fifty, is the point.
When Josie goes somewhere to a convention or a place, is she, would she be able to have a credit card for that event?
Be tough, she's not a county employee, so the issued card to the non-employee that's on the county account, that creates a, yeah.
Well, we, we have a conference in September, which is the national convene.
Right.
Uh, in Philadelphia, Jan, I'm going, and she already has submitted, um.
I'm trying to find what Josie's packet there is. Josie is at no charge, if I made for my ticket for a second person to go was four hundred fourteen dollars, which I paid on my credit card, which is in a packet of receipts there, which I did. So that's also fair.
But we're trying to in incur other expenses, we're gonna go by train.
So just for discussion sake, let's just say the number you threw, the ten thousand number. So we would, we would be working against that number with the expenses that we're incurring now, knowing that we kind of have a budget of. Ten thousand dollars to work with.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm just throwing that out.
Right, whatever the number is.
I had that number down and, but I I also was thinking that we could do the credit card thing, which would be more convenient, but I can't, you know, I get that too.
Because, because the one, the one big expense, and we, we need, now that the art show is done, we can get back into this little bit, is that bell, is that ten thousand dollar fiberglass bell. We're not a hundred percent sure how we gotta pay for that, if we gotta pay upfront or how that works, so that's gonna be a cost. That we can raise sponsorships for, but until we know we have it and how that goes, so that, that could just take that number right away. But again, we don't know if we gotta pay for that.
And this would be an example of something that you would clear before you.
Right, 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 exactly, or we kind of put that in for the next budget cycle, as is.
If there's, I mean, I guess I would say this to your concern, Bob, the the credit card question is that, you know, we'll, we will. We'll pay them at the next opportunity, so whenever, you know, commissioner meeting and then payable cycle, it's every other week, so we would pay them. Reimburse them at the next opportunity, if it's something larger that can be paid by check, then then we can, we can cut the check. I'm gonna be coding it to a line item anyway, so we can just cut the check, so if it's something that's two thousand dollars and, you know.
So in the meantime, if we go to meetings and conventions, I'll just keep the receipts, hand them, give them to Dawn, just like I'm doing now.
Yes, if that's all right.
Yes, that's fine.
But don't, like, I felt very badly about the business parts, going to a meeting and spending money to go to a meeting. And then, you know, that business cards because we didn't have, provide the money for them. So I think we gotta make sure we, you know, you're aware, we can do that, we'll have a mechanism for things like that, so we, you'll have stuff to hand out to to people.
And and even the 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 little things we've done so far, like the Facebook page has only been up a couple weeks, you know, a little over a hundred followers, but. There's suggestions coming in, it's like a two-word list, all these things that people are suggesting we do. Uh, some stuff I forgot about, so it's, it's amazing, if if we can get that cranked up a little bit, and get a couple hundred, a couple thousand people, I'm sure there, we're gonna be. Uh, we're not gonna be searching for ideas or things to do.
The sponsorship should.
Right.
Come better, you know, with awareness building.
So I guess we just need to know how.
Where the money flows.
Yeah, I don't, and you, you're gonna have to guide us on that.
Sponsorship until we have that.
Yeah.
Flow charted.
Yeah.
Of how the money goes.
Because I don't want to make any check out to me.
Right, and it really, it it, we have to keep it simple for the donors and, you know, all that stuff.
And if it's not the county, then what what is plan B?
The Historical Society was suggested, they have done that for other groups.
Jan, don't you have, you have a comment on tonight?
Tonight, uh, we do have a board meeting tonight with the Lebanon County Historical Society, and I can bring it up for discussion and see what would.
Do you want to, I don't want to, Jamie's got.
You see my, you see the gear?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're already gonna be working, I don't want to get ahead of.
Yeah, I I was gonna, I want to talk to the county treasurer, if, if you feel like, if you feel like these are gonna be. Sponsorships where somebody's gonna give you a check for two hundred fifty or five hundred dollars or something, that's probably workable, I want to talk to to Sally.
Okay.
But if it's, you know, you've got, you're selling five hundred tickets at five dollars apiece or something, and then there's that, then that becomes a little more. If you don't think that's something you're gonna be involved with, there's gonna be sponsorships and then go, you know, that's coming in and it goes back out again. You know, those kinds of sums would be manageable if they're in check form. But if we're, you know, I really didn't want to be handling, somebody brings in a, a zipper pouch full of, you know, cash and that weird, yeah. So it depends on what you have in mind, if you're thinking sponsorships primarily, then we may be able to do some.
Yes.
So you're telling us not to have a donation box.
Yeah. You don't want.
Yeah, if somebody wants to make a donation, then I would get it, you know, that I. Yeah.
Other counties have a piece that's created saying be part of the history.
Yeah.
You know, to commemorate the two fifty with a twenty dollar and twenty six cent donation.
Donation, we were thinking of something like that.
Pledge forms then, that people can.
It does appear to be.
Send it back in by check or something like that.
That would work, and we could do that, we could have a little piece produced that.
And we also discussed today, you know, could, is there a way to set up, make it really easy, right? To make it really easy, you should be able to get more donations, so is there a PayPal way, is there a Venmo way? But then it's like, where?
Our code.
Right, but like, but then where does that, you know, I mean, I don't want to, those, those ideas seem great, but where's that money, like, how? Or not, no, and I don't know if we want to set up.
I don't think we want to set up Venmo, no, we don't need to be that cool. We don't need to be that cool, I don't want to get, I don't want to get involved in all that, I'm sorry.
I think, I think we do, I think we need to be that cool.
No, I don't think we need to be that cool.
Oh, you work that out in your committee.
Can we have a sidebar for a minute? Let's go.
I mean, this is a good time to be getting all these things talked about and and know where you're, you know, where you are financially and appreciate what you've done to look, look at the next two years and it's good.
That's the two years.
Well, I just.
It'll be here before we know it.
It is, it is funny how so many people let you mention it too, like two fifty. It is, it is funny how so many people let you mention it too, like two fifty. And you give them a minute and then like, they kind of do the math and like, oh yeah. And then most people say, I remember. Right, and then they talk about nineteen seventy six, what they were doing within elementary school, you know, it's just interesting.
Yeah, that two fifty could be a magical sponsorship level.
Sure, right, well, that's kind of what we're.
Five hundred.
Right, you can close your numbers better.
Get hard, yeah.
And then don't forget, we have that 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 time capsule. That's at Coleman's and that's, I guess, a city-related project, so how does that?
When was that?
Nineteen seventy six.
We've, we have a.
And 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 don't, and I probably shouldn't.
That's for the county bicentennial.
But the whole process of that, I guess they're, they're, they have to open it on a specific day. And then there's, there's something in there that they have to do, like there's like, there's like a whole process of what's involved with that. Um and then it's, I believe it's to re-bury it then, so that's one of the things we've been discussing too, we as a two fifty, is there something we add, or do we do our own time capsule, right? Side by side or?
It's a time capsule buried right in front of municipal building.
Right.
Yeah. Is that the country from nineteen seventy six? That was, what's out here is the
Bicentennial.
County bicentennial
Right.
Not the country. In two thousand thirteen, I know that that's buried out here. I don't know that there's a country.
No. Not making it easy.
Yeah, well, all these things can be worked out.
Yeah.
Hey, anything else from your end?
So we're just talking about the larger amounts coming possibly through the county. Possibly.
You know, trying to work that out, you know, without an answer today.
And 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 also here, what what you're saying, we should probably, probably do things in a way that it's not those small increments, it'll be easier to handle, so.
Yeah, I mean, so if somebody's, you know, they're at your stand and they say, I would like to contribute or like to help some way, it would be, it would just, not that we wouldn't be grateful for a five dollar, but you know, a jar wouldn't be as
Right.
desirable as a, as a check or a pledge form. You know, you have something ready to go, here you go.
And you mail it to this P O box, whatever.
But but just an idea, just involved recently in helping the Cedar Hill Cemetery restore a Civil War monument and soliciting donations and uh for Citizens Bank out there, they made that chicken barbecue, so there's nothing to stop somebody from doing a T-shirt sale and turning over the proceeds, you know.
All right, handling.
Yeah.
A thing that takes small increments and then handing over the.
Maybe a local business wants to put their logo on it.
Yeah.
So.
It's a perfect thing to celebrate, so I mean, it's, it's not gonna be hard to get people to understand what we're trying to accomplish uh and.
Any other questions for us?
I have a question, it's funny, when I read your mission statement, you sent it a couple of weeks ago, I thought it was perfect, very simple statement, but Josie, you said something, you, community night at the fair, and some people didn't have a clue. Should we include the date, twenty, July fourth, twenty twenty six? Just take it, think about, should we add that somehow?
To pound on that.
Thinking, you're, when you're meeting with somebody or a event like that, you tell them, but we're gonna post this on a website.
Well, first of all, if people read Levton, they would know about, they're just saying, but but so many wishing your people, it's not a Levton first. Go from there. No, in sincerity, uh Jen, you said something that the board had, you mentioned a bunch of things, you said about brainstorming. And then you said the tourism board has given approval to these, to these things. What so far have, you threw out a whole bunch of things about the moo and chew and what has actually been approved by the tourism?
The amount of money.
Just the amount of money.
Yes, that I will take it and do tourism-related history projects and community tourism-related projects, which is always my goal with the money that I have.
Except for the video, video.
And I think the video is is community-related, certainly. Um and uh.
But I mean, that's not a rainstorm, you're doing it.
Oh yeah, that's, that, that's something I already promised I would do, and I have that under my video budget for this year.
I have a few more questions offline, I know they have other.
Sure, of course. I probably misheard Jim, but it made me, reminded me of something I did years ago, uh Mills and Bang Barnes, it's a book. And I thought barnstorming would be a great, uh one of your history projects. I'd be glad to dig up a copy and share it with you, and you could build upon it, because, you know, let's just say I have thirty barns in there and I don't remember, there are probably three hundred, but, you know, the oldest, the most significant architecturally, whatever. Um and then, of course, we have the craw barn, that could be the star for the whole thing. And I I understand they're working on it again, so.
Good.
I hope it's done soon.
Yeah.
But at any rate, um our barns tell a whole history on their own.
Sure.
And now you all have a shirt and a coaster as well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jamie thought you were cooking.
That'll be twenty dollars and twenty six cents, please. What's that?
Feeling cookies at the next meeting.
I promise I'll have cookies at the next meeting.
Right, okay, so if you want to get back together, let us know, and then we'll have our homework done and and you can let us know what direction you're in.
Jamie, you do not want me to do anything with Historical Society at this time, then? Okay, that's fine, sure, that is, that's fine.
If you guys, if you guys are willing.
Sure. You're the only one. The video, so I'd love to get you in there, it feels wrong for you not to be in the video, but Friday morning is our last filming. So let me know, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna check the treasurer.
Okay, okay. Just tonight, we have a meeting, so it would have been a convenience, so it's, it's fine, but I can always bring it up to the executive meeting and that entire board meeting as well too, so.
Okay, thank you all very.
Thank you all.
Appreciate everybody's and hope you get a couple more helpers uh along the way and as you get the word out, we really appreciate.
I think once we have specific events, it's gonna be easy to get people to volunteer for those things, those suggestions.
Well, and we do have about fifty people that have attended those meetings.
Sure.
Um at the expo and other volunteers. We just need to get our ducks in a row before we bring in more people.
And we're gonna have another one of those larger meetings right after you get back.
After we get back from Philadelphia, I was planning inviting Cassandra.
Coleman.
Coleman.
Yeah.
To come and who is.
Speak to our larger group.
To speak to our, she, she is head of the America two fifty.
For P A.
For P A, um and she actually contacted me and asked to come and speak to us. So once we get the September meeting over with, then uh I'm gonna contact her actually this week. And then we're going to move forward and that way we can have another meeting and we can inform you as to basically where we're going.
And we want Cassandra to think after she leaves that we're the most epic.
We're the most epic, yes.
True, that's, that's her whole thing, hashtag epic. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I want us another one.
Just one other question for you, um do you envision, as far as the timeline goes, uh picking up their requests for possible funding through, to get them through the end of this year at your next commissioner's meeting, or is that still to be, to be determined?
I would think so, we've kind of agreed on that.
So September third, that's the next meeting, I think.
Yeah.
So we know we're serious about.